Good?
Yep.
Okay. Now that's my list of qualifications.
Good luck with that raise. All right, folks, good morning. If everybody signed in, please, start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Bruce, would you care to lead us in prayer this morning?
Father of heaven, we are grateful to you for the blessing you've given to each of us in fact that we're a free country. We gather here today as part of the business of listening. Ask for guidance and direction of all the decisions and discussions everywhere in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you. Again, morning, everyone. If you haven't signed in, please do. Thank you. All right. Going to start with the minutes for April the 3rd. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion for the April 3rd minutes.
I have a motion by Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes for April the 17th. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve April 17th. Motion, minutes.
I have a motion by Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel. All in favor? Aye. Gentlemen, I got a signature sheet for both sets. The matter of claims, we have total payroll of claims of $635,106.1. That's payroll of $313,598. Regular claims, $238.781. Out of cycle, $82,727.57. Do I hear a motion to approve claims?
I'll make a motion to approve total payroll of claims at $635,106.1.
Thank you, Joel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor? Aye. Sheila, you have a financial report?
Just provided you the final financial report. Again, it's pretty much the same one because we're doing it by the month. And so it was the last one that you were giving as well because there's not been any payroll of claims since then. But payroll and claims both will be today. And so Friday's numbers will be $100,000 less than all the lineups as far as getting major numbers.
I guess, since we're talking about that, I'm going to have you touch on the conversation we had with the $100,000 of ARPA. We're pulling it out of one fund line and putting it in a separate. Might just want to explain that real quick.
We had received ARPA funds, the $4,039,000, I believe it was. I know an exact number, it's a little muddled in front of me. And doing my annual report, it was discovered the last $100,000 that came in should have been put in a separate fund. It's part of the local tribal. It's still allowable. It has not been spent yet, so I will be moving $900,000 out of the ARPA funds into a new fund. And $900,000, it's still permitted for in the processes they did. It's just we have to pay it out of the separate fund. But we still have our $4,039,000.
Balance is the same. That didn't change. It just moved from one fund line to another. Thank you, Sheila.
And that annual report for both of them have been submitted. You also have copies of all your claims and payroll and absence of balances.
Yeah, I'll work it on those. We about set them on down the line here. Thank you. Okay. Jail project joint meeting. Had a meeting last week with the council. Come to a decision of $25 million as the top total amount for a jail project. There's been a committee put together, working up with architects to come up with a plan that we can put a... As a matter of fact, here's a footprint still on the wall, some blueprints, but trying to get that reduced to a manageable amount. So that is in the process. So at this time, there is no other information on that. Code enforcement officer, that's going back to the council, so there's no discussion there. Pending ordinances, Dana, do we have anything there this morning?
Just wanted to say that we're going to be able to submit everything to American Legal to get the code updated online. There was the floodplain and unsafe building ordinances that were extremely large. And so I wanted to make sure that those were all ready to go. And I did make those into the format that you find in the code. So it should make it easier for them and cheaper for them to get it. So I'll get an estimate from them once they get everything of how much it'll cost.
Appreciate that. Keep that up to snuff. We did that, what, four, five years ago? We did all of them.
We did and we didn't do because we had negative general fund balances in '21. We held off '21 and '22, I believe it was. There is money budgeted in the office fund for part of that, but I'm sure it'll be more because we have that in a couple of years. We might have to go back to the council to get the difference, but there was some funding.
Good. Thank you, Sheila. It's important that we keep those up to date. And again, appreciate you working on that. All right. Cloud timekeeping update. Maddie, you want to fill us in on where we're at?
So right now, we're... We have a meeting scheduled for the beginning of next week, the 6th. And that is, I... It was sent out to some department heads. I really started with the easier ones here in the courthouse more and like a few of the ones just on the square here. And they're going to get their first training session on how the system will work and how they will be approving time cards and all that jazz. I believe you guys were included in the email, so you're welcome to join, just so you can get a look at it and see what will be going on with that. And then we'll have several follow-ups after that. They can ask any questions they have. And then we will get them into the system and then we will move on to some of the other departments. Sheriff, highway, EMS, all those. They suggested that we start with our easiest ones first and then go from there.
Makes sense.
So that's where we are with that one. The... I'm going to be working with them to order the time clocks. And then there are a couple of people who will be using the mobile app that we discussed. There was another one...
Speaking of that, and that's a decision that we need to come up with and we've discussed. We're going to make sure that all departments use a card swipe. That's the system that we're going to go with. And then, and that's every office, every department will have one. Obviously, the sheriff department, the highway department will be able to use mobile app. I think the prosecutor needs to use that. Chris, do you need the mobile app or you don't call any of your people out? So we're going to make exceptions to those departments.
Yeah, and I was going to bring that up, just saying, like, there are certain people who would...
And we're good with that. We just want to make sure uniformly, we are at a card swipe for every department.
Sure, yeah, yeah. I think overall, it was mostly time clocks and a lot of... Most departments requested time clocks, other than those few departments that asked for the mobile app because they're not always in the office specifically.
Right, like the sheriff department. They have jailers and office staff, they're going to need that.
Yeah, and they'll... Like the jailers and stuff, they'll still have the time clocks and stuff in there, but like the deputies, they'll need the mobile apps since they're out of the office most of the time anyways. We do have another... The Easy Hire is another website that was included in the contract that I've been working with as well. If I have any... If there are any departments who would like to get, like, use that, it is basically where we can put out job openings and it will put it out onto all the free sites, Indeed, all the other ones. And it funnels all of the applicants into the system. And then you can... It will basically... It will separate them into qualified applicants and not as qualified applicants.
Separate them by department?
Yeah, it will also... I can separate them by department and then it would have a supervisor listed in there and it would send those applicants to that supervisor. So if anybody wants to get to use that, I can start setting it up. I need people who I can put those job openings in so I can actually use the system. So anybody who has openings, let me know and I can put them in there and I can start working with it. It's kind of new, so I have to kind of mess with it a little bit.
Sure.
But that's that one. And then I'm working on the new hire system. It's called Easy Onboard. And that's going to help get rid of a lot of the paper trail with all... Well, not the paper trail, but it'll put all the papers into one system for new hires. So that they're not basically lost between all the people who get their hands on it. It'll be in one system and the people will have access to them if they need it. So I'm working on getting that one probably in the next, like, couple of weeks.
So once that person is hired, the department can go back in and pull all the information to put into their file?
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good.
So that's all I have unless you have questions.
I don't think so. Dana, should we go ahead and probably put a motion on the card swipe for all the departments? Or is that something that we need to do? Or is that just a...
I would say that we would wait until we know exactly.
It would probably have to be a policy, I would say, like, on what the employees are required to do, but that's up to you guys.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that we're consistent across the board and I think we're all agreeing on that.
Yeah, we don't have the time clocks yet, so...
We'll work on that as we get closer. Thank you, Madison. Okay. New business economic development. Do we have anybody here for that this morning?
She even said Chamber of Commerce also. So is there anybody here from Chamber?
Okay. I'll jump back on this a little bit. She had asked us for a approval letter for her to pursue additional funding through the Monroe County, Brown County. And again, I think if we don't pursue that, we're not doing our job when it comes to additional funding if it's available. There's a process and has to go to the council as well. They have to approve it. We're not approving anything. We're just letting her send an acceptance letter. Joel, I know that you were in favor of this as far as the funding side of things. Is it something we want to go ahead and move forward with?
Well, I think pursuing any amount of funding is beneficial to the county as a whole. So I'm going to say, let's give it a look. Let's go ahead and... But again, it's not approval for anything.
No.
It's just us allowing her to send a letter to start a discussion.
Paul, go ahead and jump in.
Okay. I've been looking, actually looking at this quite a bit. And I think it, for myself, for it to be, for me to be comfortable, you know, even sending the letter. It looks like, and I'm going to talk with a couple of people to make sure that this is correct, but it looks like it is actually, when you have a district like that, it's made up of a board that actually decides where the grants go. And it's on population. So we wouldn't be at the bottom of the list.
And I agree with that. And I've had that discussion.
We're having to put money in and not necessarily getting that much out of it.
That's a great point, Paulie. And that's, again, that's probably something that, you know, we'll... We should look into that probably before we ever do anything. But I think it's worth taking. But if it's population-based, we know how this is going to go.
Right.
So it's one of those, you just kind of do your due diligence and look at it, but by no stretch of imagination, I don't think any of us commissioners are giving this the okey-dokey by any stretch of imagination.
Because I think it, as we all know in here, there's no such thing as free money.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's true.
Well, we were already told there was a $17,000 cost to it.
Right.
Of course, that would be up to you guys to move forward on that. I guess with...
Well, you're being heard, for sure. Because we all... The sentiment's the same across the board.
Because I'm going to actually reach out to some people that are part of, are part of this in smaller counties and see, you know, if they're represented and how much they get out of it versus how much they put in.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see how Clay does versus Vigo County, and I'm sure they're in the same region. And you're exactly right. We've already discussed that and I brought it up to Marcy as well. Monroe County is going to lobby for 95% of the money. And they've got the support and the power to make that happen.
And if it's just an actual third, that everybody has to equal third that we all have to put in, you know, that's... And then we get 95% of it, then that's, you know...
So with the conversation that we're having here, let's just put this on hold for some more investigation. I'd be curious to see some other counties fall into play before we move forward.
Apparently, Paulie's got her pulse on this. I think we should wait for some feedback from her and...
And I know Paul Sinder's old commissioner over in Clay County.
For sure.
And ask him as well, so... Yeah. All right. Moving on, we have anyone here from Proactive MB this morning?
They decided that they were going to hold off. They're going to meet with Ron and Brittany and meet first. They want to go over the annual report and then they'll come to probably either the next one or the one...
I think I've got Ron scheduled sometime in June.
Okay. Yeah, I'll get with Brittany then and we'll try to get them on the same day.
Back up to Chamber. We have an application in front of you.
For the fireworks?
County fireworks, the annual firework show, and they're presenting their application. It is complete. I don't know that it is on there. So we waived the $100 application.
Well, I think we've done that in the past because it is a community event, yes. Ask for a motion to approve Chamber to host the county firework show as they've done in the past and waive the fee for the community event.
I'll make that motion, Garrett.
I have a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Require some signatures from the EMS and the sheriff department and different things, so... Okay. IDHS hazard mitigation. I think we've got a small team here this morning.
Yeah, they sent a whole gang over.
Yeah, and that's a good thing. We've had a long conversation before we got started this morning, so that's... We're ahead of the game a little bit.
You guys want to sit there at the microphones, they can record what I said. I'll stand up and talk to you over here.
We do have some handouts for you. So it'll be HMGP guidance, BRIC 2023 guidance, that is subject to change with BRIC 2024. But so you can have kind of like the notice of funding opportunity, so you can kind of see what the BRIC grant cycle follows. Some eligible projects and then I think I said it. But yeah, so just for... So you can have it.
Thank you.
So, kind of like mentioned, we were talking about it earlier, but unfortunately FEMA cut our HMGP funding by $1 million. So we have to reduce basically every county's projects. So as you know, we were working with Jack for the past couple of months to fund a five-siren project. Unfortunately, because they threw out $1 million, we can only unfortunately fund one. So we can fund some other projects in other counties. However, what I wanted to talk to you guys today about is the BRIC program. So even though we can only fund one under the HMGP funding, we can fund and we will fund if you want. We will fund all four other sirens under the BRIC program. The BRIC program is a nationally competitive program. It's funded every year. It opens in the fall, subject to FEMA because it's congressionally funded. So when Congress creates the budget, then we get told how much we'll have. But that is open every year. Sirens are an eligible project under that program. That program follows a lot of the same things like we were talking with Jack. So basically, we would just take what we're doing for HMGP, put it over into the BRIC program, and all that work is pretty much done.
And you do all this for us?
Yeah, we'll come down when it's open. We'll work with... Jack is the project manager. Work with him because it has to be in a county account. So you guys will have to apply for it, but we can go and set you up in the program. We can help you work through it. Again, it'll be the same documentation, same information. Basically, what we already gathered is what we would just put over into the other program.
Question I had earlier when we were all talking, we've already acquired these sirens. Not what we had at the highway. This is... They're not part of that?
No, that's phase two that's being installed right now. We're talking about five additional sirens.
Five additional, okay.
That we considered phase three and...
Just want to make sure we're on the same page here.
We haven't started any of that process at all. Because phase two had ARPA money and we can't combine the two, so there has to be a clear distinction.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good.
Yeah, because...
Make sure we're all on the same page here.
Okay, yeah.
There's ARPA funding and FEMA funding. FEMA does not like ARPA funding. So, yeah, that was... We talked with Jack and he's like...
So the government don't like their own programs? That's amazing.
I mean...
No, I got it.
Yeah, I don't remember it safe. So, and again, I do apologize for that, but again, we want... We are committed to getting these sirens for you guys. And again, it's not a no. It's just say, we move forward with one project, one siren at the moment under this project funding, and then we're dedicated to getting the other four.
So with the one that we have that's been approved, do we hold that till the other four? Or do we go ahead with the one and do an install? How are we going to handle that?
We would do the... Yeah, we would go ahead and move forward with the one and then we'd have to wait for the other four.
Submit the other four? Okay.
So, but we can move... And it can be whichever one you choose. Wherever you want to put it, we just, you know, identify it in the application. It's going to be at this place. And then, and whichever one you guys deem highest priority that you guys want. And then, again, we just move everything else to the BRIC program.
I just want to make sure we all understand that as well. We can't go ahead with the one and then resubmit for the other four?
Yeah.
Gentlemen, obviously, we want to go ahead and move forward with the BRIC program. If they're going...
What kind of timeline are we looking at? Is the application this fall coming or...
Yeah, so again, it is subject to FEMA. But how it's been in the past few years, the past few grant cycles, it's opened up in like October. We have a couple of months to apply. So end of January is when we submit it to FEMA. They review it, you know, say yes or no. And then we get like their decision in like the spring.
I'm going to ask for a motion to go ahead and approve. That way, we've got it in the minutes that the commissioners will agree to move forward with the BRIC program for the tornado sirens. Do I hear a motion for 2025?
Yeah, it would be spring 2025.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve proceeding forward with the BRIC program for 2025 concerning our sirens within the county.
I second that. Got a motion by Joel, second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
The county match on the BRIC grant is how much?
It would be 25%. Yeah, yeah. It would be... But it would be reduced because it'd be four. So, and then the one would be... No, the percentage is not reduced, but it would be 25%.
Because it's only four sirens, yeah.
Have you got this money raised yet, Bruce, for 2025?
Well, I'm just listening. That's the whole problem with this. He can't. He's stuck. We can't move forward with asking for any funding from the community because it won't qualify for 25% if we get it before the date of the grant's approved.
So we're on... We're at stale, maybe, or we're just...
We're at a pause, yeah, unfortunately. We're at like, yeah.
And when people have their checkbooks out, that's not a good time to pause, by the way. It's just not. And people have their checkbooks out because of this guy's hard work. I mean, he is pound and pay. And we got people, organizations, and businesses in this community holding on to write the date on the check because of this. It's very frustrating.
Oh, absolutely.
So from the federal level, FEMA cut the funding. Is that correct? And then turn it trickles to Indiana? And then it took... Okay, has this affected other communities in the same fashion?
Yeah, unfortunately, there's whole other counties that we can't fund projects for.
So we're privileged to get one at this point, is what you're saying?
No, unfortunately, but it's... We prioritize this one because we know you guys were hard hit and so we want to prioritize your program. But unfortunately, it's some other counties who weren't as hard hit during the disaster. We had to say, you can only do BRIC.
Bruce, I know you've been a big driving force behind a bunch of this stuff when the tornado hit. Do you want to interject here?
I've been emotional since I did about three quarters of my house, like, about 12 hours. I respect the responsibility and job we have. I have great respect. I've dealt with lots of stuff. If there's any way to reconsider that, I don't know that we can get the four sirens. It's hard for me, but I think what is the thing, the brass know that we lost a life property in here. If there's any way, because it's a matter of potential saving lives, it's like, whatever. But just thought, if any thing can be done, we've done... We'll do what we need to do, but we won't give up on the project. It's a matter of saving a life.
And I agree with Bruce. I think wholeheartedly, if we can keep hammering and hammering, if there's anything we can do to get this ball rolling slightly faster. You know, we're ready for this. It's important to our community. And it's going to save lives. And as you know, Olin County's quite a hilly terrain and sometimes you might hear a siren, sometimes you not... Jack's done a wonderful job of scoping this out, getting these sent in the appropriate location. So I would hope that you folks can poke and prod at every avenue and try to move this all. It's disheartening.
If you guys want, we can look, maybe not under our programs, but we have other resources for other grant programs. Again, I would not know much about the grant program, but if, like, this project should fall under them, we can also send those resources as well.
I think any avenue that's available, we would be interested in looking at. And that needs to go Jack's direction and then he can take a look at it and bring it to us.
And as far as I'm concerned, sitting here, I give Jack the okay to find it.
Yeah.
Okay, and I don't think either one of you would agree. If he needs help, I have an individual that's sitting in wait, wanting the help with grants, a highly educated young lady that is driving to get some grants going. Is really enthusiastic about it. And folks, we got to find it. You know, so in my mind, I think we make a motion to allow Jack White to pursue any and all avenues concerning this money.
Yeah, we can make a motion on that if need be. I mean, that's part of his responsibility.
Right.
Sitting in that position anyway, but...
I mean, he's sitting in there and I think if he's got any avenues, we should allow that... Allow him to pursue them in the fullest fashion.
No, I agree. And any help that you can send his way, we're all for it.
Absolutely.
I do have a question backing up to the mitigation grant, the one siren. Is the application to the point where we can seek the 25% funding?
Yes.
We're ready to have checks for him on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have that total yet? You say one siren, but...
Let us crunch the numbers based off of the people who already sent us. And we'll formulate it and send it your way when we get back into the office.
I have not priced one siren. So I don't know if that is a five-siren price or a one. I... That's what you're going to do. I need to check on that.
Okay. We'll do that and then we'll give you like those estimates and then you can go and say, hey, is this right?
Okay.
Yeah, cool.
Very good. I'd like to thank you all for coming down. Larry, I know it's an extra trip for you and all, yeah, I appreciate it. Yeah, I appreciate you guys coming down. Sheila has something?
We need to remain...
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, actually, Steve. Um, State Hazmat Mediation Officer, the Indian Department of Homeland Security. Sorry about that.
Has a mouthful there.
Yeah, yeah. Um, the acronym is SMO.
SMO?
Yes, SMO.
So the...
Caddy attorneys get some questions.
All of the, any application's going to have to be signed. And so, what you could do is authorize one of you to sign those applications, pending a review of them by Jack, and if you want me to review it too. And then if our review says go for it, you can sign off on it.
Bob being the liaison, can you give any authority to that, to do that?
I'll make a motion to allow Bob Curry to sign off on grant applications.
Pending review of...
And pending review of Jack.
And it turns, and it turns.
Yeah.
And I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
So as those come in, Jack, just give her a nod.
Okay.
We'll look forward. Thank you all for being here. Again, we appreciate what, we appreciate the one. We'd love to have the five.
Yeah. Um, you will get the five. You will get the five.
All right, we're holding you to that. You heard that guy. You will get the five.
You're being recorded, so...
Yeah. Maybe you didn't hear that.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
We're committed to the sirens as you watch.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you very much.
All right, Greg.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Greg.
Commissioners, we should have sealed bids here today, as always, on our projects for Freeman Road. Prior to the opening of those, I'd like to just go over just a few things that we've got going on. Uh, I'm going to ask, we've talked to each of you Commissioners about two roads since we have a reclamer in our position right now on rental that I think needs to have the centers reclaimed and worked in. One would be a two thousand and twelve point eight feet of Surefield Road. Uh, that is from where the new pavement stops on Surefield to the first ninety-degree corner. There had been a roadslide there. Uh, so there had been new pavement from Brazeville Road up until that point. And then there was new pavement in from the other end, and that short section never was paved. Uh, it's in pretty bad shape right now. Uh, so I'd ask for a vote that Highway Department be able to reclaim, use the calcium chloride process on a two thousand twelve point eight feet of Surefield Road to make the corrections.
That's right there in front of Plywood King.
It's just above Plywood King.
Yeah, yeah, right in that area.
I'll make that motion. If it's all right, Gary, we'll just go ahead and get that one out of the way.
Sure.
Uh, make a motion that we reclaim Surefield Road at two thousand twelve point eight feet. Is that correct, Greg?
That's correct.
On Surefield Road.
Got a motion by Joel, do I hear a second? Second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Then I've spoken to you all about also Newport Road. I'm going to ask that we be able to reclaim two thousand five hundred eighty-five point seven feet of Newport Road between Mitten Road and Anderson Road.
I'll make that motion, Gary.
Are we doing this in replacement of another road? Was that our...
Yes, that plan was, we were doing that instead of Ottermind Church.
I just want to make sure we get that in the minutes.
That is correct. Now, Ottermind Church, we will, we have prepped that road. Um, it's in pretty good shape. We'll reshape that, and then we'll use a top coat of calcium chloride. But we will not do the reclaim process.
Yeah, Greg and I spoke about that, and I knew there was going to be some, some trading, if you will. And so we decided we would go with that process, and I'm perfectly fine with that.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're all on the same page here.
So probably the motion needs to be Newport Road, and then the change in what we're going to do, Ottermind Church.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and reclaim two hundred, or two thousand five hundred eighty-five feet of Newport Road between Mitten and Anderson in lieu of coal, coal paving Ottermind Church. But reclaiming or somewhat treating Ottermind Church. So if that makes any sense.
It does, yeah, broken packaging, however you want to put it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, got a motion on the floor by Joel, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, need to report that there was a traffic accident at the intersection of Freedom Arnie Road and Orchard Road. At that, there is a sheriff's report. It was a personal injury accident. Car left the roadway and struck this culvert. This culvert is, best way to describe it, it is a twelve-foot flat bottom arcs pipe. Uh, it is damaged. It is flowable, but because of the damage, that will decrease the life in that culvert. I think extremely badly. I think, you know, it may cut the life in half, and it's going to disturb the flow. So I would like to work with Dana on that, the insurance company, in order for a full replacement at that location.
Absolutely. I don't know if that necessarily needs a motion. That's just course of business.
That's just advising you that that's what's going on. You are all aware of the damaged by agricultural equipment bridge, one forty-five. United Consulting has been contacted. Um, they've been sent photographs. Uh, they will actually be on site this week. They didn't believe that the weight limit needed to be lowered. But from the photographs, we, you know, they were able to determine that bridge is compressed, compressed-beamed bridge. Uh, and there is a membrane laid on top of compressed beams that has been damaged. It will need to be replaced. And then there was also three hundred and thirty-nine feet of asphalt torn up. So that will need to be repaired. Uh, Sheriff's Department did respond. Report has been done, and we do know that. I may have kept Dana involved in that one also.
Absolutely.
Um, and then lastly, Commissioners, for the sealed bids are opened. And that is for Freeman Road. I'm going to ask, traffic study's been done on Freeman Road. Road counts have been done. I would like for an ordinance for a speed thirty-five mile an hour be posted on that road. And the reason I ask to start that process now is when it's paved, I would be able to put signage up, and speed could be enforced at that time.
Yeah, we're not waiting two months after the fact.
Will that road be striped, Greg?
Yes.
That will be striped?
Single stri, I mean, double yellow down the middle. It does not have fog lines.
Okay.
Ask for a motion to approve, Kenny Terry put it on the table, for Freeman Road at thirty-five, speed limit at thirty-five mile an hour. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Bob, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. I don't have anything further other than request, what are the bids that we got in for the resurface of Freeman Road to be opened by the determiner?
I'm going to make a quick comment before we do that. Greg's got the new mowing piece of equipment on the Ford or New Holland, whatever tractor it's, the new origin.
It is on one of our new Holland tractors.
Done an excellent job. Obviously, grass grows faster than you can cut it right now. But from what I've seen, it, it does a really good job. So glad to see we're getting some of this new equipment out there.
Have we received the John Deere yet?
Not yet.
No, it will not come into August, unfortunately. New Holland went down yesterday afternoon, so, um, it's, it's, I don't think it is a serious issue, but it will have to be sent to Blush Brothers. We can't, our program won't read it. So it's a cheaper process to haul it down there than to have the service truck to come here, so...
Do we still have the John Deere with the boom brush mower on it, right? Still, the one Brian, isn't that? What's he, is it the New Holland that he's driving?
That's the New Holland.
Okay.
That's the one with the issue right now.
Okay.
Uh, the Massey we have, but the decision made, it's traded in, it's sent.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't want to carry that one up. All right.
And we were lucky, we had a retired individual that mowed for us for years, asked for a part-time job. And so he has ceased a part-time, and he was able to ride the tractor and go.
And the machine's done a good job, so I think it was worth the investment. All right, Greg, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay. There were three bids received, opening in order they were received. Uh, the first one is from Milestone. All of our property seen. Okay. So, uh, project one, Freeman Road, one section from Veterans Bridge, Bridge six zero 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 five five to State Road forty-three, seventeen thousand eight hundred forty-seven feet in length. Average width is eighteen feet. Surface depth, depth HMA, two inch. Estimated tonnage is four thousand sixteen tons, I think. That's what it reads. Uh, wedge level depth is one inch. Estimated tonnage, two thousand eight tons. Used twelve-millimeter surface. Total estimated tonnage is six thousand and twenty-four tons. And of course, that's the same for all of them. Just wanted to get out there and what this is for. So the total price from Milestone is four hundred and forty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty cents. The next is from Wallace Construction. And Wallace Construction for the project has a bid of five hundred and ninety-nine thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-eight cents. And the last is E and B paving. E and B paving has a total price of four hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars and forty cents. Um, and I will go back, and because there's, there's price per ton. That is seventy dollars and eighty cents for E and B. Ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents for Wallace. And seventy-three dollars and seventy cents for Milestone.
Thank you, Dana.
If there's an acceptance, it would be pending to make sure all the documentation is correct.
They're big. And these companies have bid with us before and know the procedures. We've always followed those.
Right.
Gentlemen, is there any questions or concerns? As we know, the low bid is the company that we're going to go with. Uh, in this particular situation, there's no issue?
I think the question I have is for Highway Superintendent, not to put him on the spot, but I think his input here, regardless of the dollar value, is important enough that we should listen to it. All these, I just believe some info would be required.
Sure.
If, if you care to. If you don't want to, Greg, that's fine, if you don't want to come in.
I don't have a problem with anything, Commissioners. Commissioners, uh, this was a sealed bid process as required, and as we always do. They are apples for apples. I have worked with all of these companies, some in a different fashion, but all of them together. And I would request that you accept a low bid from E and B paving.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
That being said, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept an E and B paving bid at four hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars and forty cents.
I'm not good, Gary.
Have a motion by Bob, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a projected start date?
Um, I just asked that it not be, I believe, started before the, uh, it's in the documents, I don't think it would be started before May fifteenth.
Wait those schools out?
Uh, I don't think, I think it's May fif, not start before May fifteenth, done by August first.
Okay.
I think so.
Says July first.
Oh, excuse me, July, okay, July first. Awesome.
You good with that, Eric? Fits in your... Okay. All right, gentlemen.
Thank you. Uh, I will tell you, gentlemen, the bid packets have been sent out for the community crossing, uh, uh, roads that were approved. Uh, they'll be due back in front of you on June fifth.
Glad you mentioned that. I wanted to let everybody know when I've got it here in front of me. I signed the doc, you signed for the state yesterday, day before, and it's officially been approved.
I, and these are the way the roads were submitted to the grants. Um, I'll go ahead and, I know it's been written to the record before, but just so everyone knows again. Uh, County Road, South five fifty west, uh, and that's from Patrisburg Road to Stoops Road. For everybody to know, that is Splinter Ridge Road. And then Keith Road from South County Road five fifty west, which is Splinter Ridge Road to Owen County Bridge one oh one. Now, this road, under the new certification, will be Pleasant Hill. And everyone calls this road Pleasant Hill, but the old certification calls it Keith. So when you hear Keith Road on this location, that is actually off of Splinter Ridge. And it is what is referred to by all the local folks as Pleasant Hill. Jones Road, uh, from Quincy Road to Colerosh Road. County Road, East eight fifty north, uh, from Stone Mountain to Jones Road. And gentlemen, eight fifty north would be Truesdale Road. And then South County Road fifty east, from Freeman Road to Brazeville Road. Gentlemen, that is actually Pottersville Road. And then Pottersville Road from Brazeville Road to Stoops Road. Franklin Streets in Freedom, uh, from the railroad track to State Road sixty-seven, and Methodist Church Street in Freedom from the railroad track to State Road sixty-seven. I will state that I think your time in the town of Freedom, Commissioners, you allowed us to do Jefferson Street, the town of Freedom, last year. And with the improvement of these two streets, there is a federal aid project going on in Freedom this summer where the sidewalks will be replaced with new Dollar General. Freedom is getting some revitalization shot here. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a big improvement down there. It's welding work.
Yeah, our work on that Dollar General.
Thank you, Greg, Jack.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, elected officials, department heads. Chris?
Since you guys emailed a couple of days ago about some accounts that we've got with some patients. If you recall, about four years ago, we changed our billing companies. We've got some accounts with the old billing company that are four years plus old. And I'd like to get permission to write those accounts off.
And they're ten years old too, right? And they're ten years old too, right?
Four.
Those four?
Oh, I thought I read. Four years old. Um, those accounts don't, eight hundred and something dollars total, and sending out, sending out monthly statements, trying to keep track of, of those individuals and how much they've paid and stuff. We're putting more time into it than what, than what we're getting out of it. And I'd just like to go ahead and get those accounts closed out and be done with them and, and move on.
Gentlemen, Chris, like, as his liaison spoke about this a month or two ago, and I, and I fully agree that it's time just to write these off. We're spending way more time trying to collect eight hundred dollars than it's worth. This goes back to the old collection company.
Yeah.
And we've changed company since then, so.
And, and, and we did discuss with the new company about, um, taking those accounts on and doing that work for us, but when, when they look at what the history is of these people paying, and they're gonna be sending out the, the same invoices that we would be, and they're like, eh, we're not really interested in that, so.
And speaking to the county attorney, he agrees that this situation, just felt that it was best that we bring it here to the union and make a motion on it, we all agree, and so, uh, with that being said, do you hear a motion to approve?
Do you have the exact, uh, dollar amount?
It's on my calculator.
Okay.
I wanna say it takes fifty-five and forty cents or something like that.
There's, there's like eight eighty-five and forty or something like that.
Up to, you could just make a motion up to nine hundred dollars, and then that way, there's.
Any other questions, Ma'am? I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion to approve, Chris, to write off up to nine hundred dollars of, uh, bad debt.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that's all I've got, unless you guys have any questions.
All our ambulances are up and running, you still got five on the ground?
No. No.
I shouldn't have asked.
July can't get here quick enough. Uh, we've got one that we've been fighting for probably, um, six months. About every two weeks, we're having to put a quart of, uh, antifreeze in it, and I'm taking it, trying to figure out where it's going. Nobody could figure it out, well, it showed itself the other day. It started up to leave and just filled the bays with steam. Took it to.
We know that's not good.
Well, it's, it's not bad, though, it's not as bad as it could be. It's not a head gasket, it's not a cracked block, but, uh, we're not getting antifreeze into the combustion chambers or anything, but there is a small crack between the water jacket and the exhaust port. So, when it sits there, it only opens up when it's cold. So after the engine cools down, it'll trickle antifreeze into the exhaust, then you start it up and the exhaust steams it up. So, um, it's taken apart right now, we're waiting on two new heads for it from a local shop. I guess this is the problem they have, and they're gonna put two new heads on it, so. Hopefully have it back at the end of this week, beginning of next one.
And again, July can't get here soon enough.
Can't get here soon enough, yeah.
Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome.
The total of that, uh, the accounts that are over four years old, for the record, is eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty cents. So we've got an accurate number.
I just want to provide you guys with a little quick update. The, where we are on the, on the five sirens, four of them are standing, and three of those four are waiting on RMC to hook them to power, and then we'll be done. The only thing I gotta do at that point is go around and put new padlocks on, on both boxes. I'm already working with Spencer Hardware on getting those. The siren at forty-six and two forty-six, uh, had a water line that was not located correctly. It was six feet off, RMC drove right through the water line, uh, so then we had to move four feet away from the water line, and that put us right on the forty-foot rightway from N dot. And the homeowner wasn't comfortable with that, so we went across the street. That homeowner, that landowner was fantastic to work with, so at, uh, somewhere around eight-thirty in the morning, the horn's already on the pole. And so it's, it's gonna be a little bit of a deal to move it across the road, but Sheriff White's committed, uh, the sheriff's department resources to, to help us with traffic, so we're gonna get that pole across the road, get that siren up tomorrow. Um, so, the, uh, the one at Stone Mountain, I, I really look for it to, to reach a lot of people. So it's at the very top of the hill, and.
About the highest place in the county out there.
Yeah, yeah, mile high hill, they call it, I don't know why there's not a house up there, it's absolutely beautiful, but, uh, uh, yeah, that, that siren is there and, and should reach a lot of people at northeast corner of, of the county. Uh, the last thing I've got, I'm very happy to announce, all of them are going on vacation next week, so I won't be around.
Jack, a quick question, when we get these last five up, would it be possible to get location on a sheet of paper of all of these places that we have sirens, that way, if we're asked by, Bruce has it right there, Austin.
Yeah, yeah.
That way, if people ask us, where's the nearest siren, or, you know, we can answer those questions, cause I honestly have no idea where they're all at.
Yeah, Suzanne, I think we make that available.
Okay.
She has all that stuff, she's been, she's on the siren committee, and that's how we.
I'll just get with her.
Yeah, each siren will have a mile circle around it, and two mile circle, that's how we determine where the next siren.
I know that we looked at some of that when you were looking at new sites and stuff, you brought it to us, so.
Yeah, Suzanne has, Suzanne has all that in mapping, so we're ready.
Enjoy your vacation. Anyone else? Sheila? Dana, you wanna discuss these AT&T, I know we've already talked about them, it's the Prime and the Centrix.
Yes, they're, uh, it's an annual, not annual, it's a three-year, uh, renewal of the services, um, for the intercom system and the phone system, um, there is, uh, substantial savings, uh, that, pull that up here. Um, substantial savings when you use, uh, the, uh, three-year, I'm gonna pull that up here. Okay, so, a monthly charge for one year would be one thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents. For a monthly charge for two years is one thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-five cents. And for three years is six hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty cents. So the, uh, annual charges for the service would be, and this is just the phone service itself, seventeen thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars for one year, fourteen thousand one twenty-seven for two years, and seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty cents for the three years. Um, the intercom monthly charges, uh, one year, four ninety-six, two years, three forty-four, and two forty for, for the three years. So the intercom, uh, annual charges would be five thousand nine hundred and fifty-two, uh, for a one year, four thousand one hundred and twenty-eight, for two years, and two thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars, uh, for three. So the total monthly charge then, including both the service and the intercom, if it was a one year, it would be one thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty cents. If it was two years, it'd be one thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, but with three years, it's nine hundred and six dollars and thirty cents. So, the annual charges, um, total annual charges would be, for the, uh, one year, twenty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars. For two years, it would be eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars, and for three years, it's ten thousand and eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty cents. So, uh, there is a considerable savings going with, uh, a three-year plan. Um, also, uh, there was a discussion, you know, do you have to accept broadband if they switch? Um, and you don't, you're, what you're paying for is these services, and they can't force other services and charges upon you. Um, if you choose to go with a different system, with, that they, uh, if they enhance their delivery method, um, there's provisions in there that says that they'll let you terminate this, uh, contract in order to, to, to take on that contract. Otherwise, you know, it's three years, set services, set amount, um, and, and so they have to provide that service.
And what Dana's talking about, and I've spent some time with IT, I've talked to AT&T, it's hard to imagine in our lifetime, but a lot of things have changed, copper phone lines are going to be a thing of the past. I've been told by AT&T, by the end of twenty-twenty-five, there'll be no copper phone lines available to anyone. So, it'll all be fiber optic. So, checking in with him, the attorney, checking in with IT, we currently have Smithville Telephone Internet Service here in the courthouse and most of our surrounding offices. They will be putting in a phone system at some point, so I was curious, we wanna sign a three-year, thirty-six-month agreement for the lesser amount, but I didn't want to get into, in the middle of next year, we switch over to all fiber in our fiber phone line system, and, and we're stuck paying this, and we verified that there isn't out to the contract. Uh, speaking to IT, they said that AT&T's, uh, broadband service is absolutely horrible, and I'm just telling you what I've been told. We already have Smithville in the system, so at some point, we'll be making that change. But for the time being, we have to continue this contract, so I think it's best that we, uh, make a motion to accept a thirty-six-month term for the lesser price. If I get any questions on that.
So it'd be a three-year term for annual charge of ten thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty cents.
Do I hear a motion to approve? It requires one signature, both the same.
I'll make a motion to approve, allow Gary to pay for, or, pay for it, sign for it, allow Gary to pay for it.
Got a motion by Joel for me not to pay for it. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
And Sheila, there's certain dates that you required to put on here, is that correct, or are we good with it?
No, they're written in.
Okay.
Well, you're to sign in on three twenty, which was there already.
Okay, that's what I thought, we talked about a date.
Right, and you have two different contracts.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is, can we clarify, this is the Centrex, is that what you're going?
Yes, it's, it's both of them.
Both of them together.
Together.
The first one is the Centrex service, and the other one is the Prime service. The date on the Prime, can it be today's date, or is it? It can, okay. I wanna make sure we get this right. And then Sheila, also here in front of me, you have provided us with the Commonwealth Engineer Bill, uh, that we discussed many months ago to be paid out of Q cap, this was for the feasibility study for the sewer project down forty-three, that we got a ninety million dollar estimate on, uh, but we have that now on file. So, uh, again, I think this was already approved to be paid by Q cap.
It was, I'm just clarifying that if you still wanna pay because of prior conversation, the expense of the project.
Well, we have to pay for the feasibility study, so we now have that on, on record and filed moving forward. I'd like to not pay it, but we can, so. Any other comments, Sheila? Dana?
Nothing for you?
Commissioners?
Uh, yeah, we got cleanup Saturday coming up this Saturday, for all the people in Long County. Bring your junk, we'll take care of it for you.
For those out there watching, uh, I'll have two dumpsters this year at Thatcher's Trucking, uh, side of Coal City. And, uh, bring it on.
No tires.
No tires, no batteries.
Yeah.
And no.
Well, our refrigerator's pretty open.
Yeah, if you're bringing those appliances, they're supposed to be released and free on. I, I've got this same note as well, as we all do, we're adding Patrusburg to, to locations this year, there'll be two dumpsters there, Patrusburg Fire Department. We are fortunate enough that I've got a Boy Scout troop that's gonna have nine volunteers to help us this year. Uh, another request that I'm gonna put out, I know a couple of the, uh, political candidates are, are going to work these sites. I'm gonna put that out there for everyone that's running for office, good opportunity to Q dot, Highway Department, uh, Freedom, Coal City, and Patrusburg, you might wanna get out there and spend a couple hours and meet some of these people and, and help, uh, clean up the county, a good opportunity for everyone. What a better way to serve the community than, uh, help clean it up, so.
Eight to four.
Eight to four. Last year, we had a little bit of issue, the containers came out of Bloomington, and they were picking them up when they were full and not bringing anything back, we had a couple issues with that. Uh, John has worked really good with Kenny Pass in years past, and, and again, this year, uh, to increase our containers, they're coming out of Terre Haute this year, and has assured us that they will stay there until they are all full. Uh, so, if they pull one, they should be bringing us one back.
Do we know who's working the sites, just out of, I'll, I'll be in Coal City, folks.
I'm gonna start at Q dot, and Bob's gonna start at the Highway Garage, or Freedom, and then switch back and forth. I, I worked half at Q dot and half at the Highway Garage, I'll do the same thing. I've got, uh, two of the, uh, Terry Walton's wife, I think she's the Boy Scout Director, uh, he works at the Highway. She's been very gracious in getting together, uh, these nine individuals, we, we've asked to put two at Q dot, two at Patrusburg, everywhere, I think, maybe two at Coal City.
I thought you said two at Coal City, now you're telling me you're putting them at Patrusburg, so I didn't.
I think there's one at Patrusburg.
Okay.
There may be more than that, she said there was a family that had a, five, five people that was interested in helping alongside their, their son, so, we'll take all the volunteers we can get.
There will be a Kelly Highway worker each one of the sites, um, I know we didn't use a piece of equipment at every site last year, but we will have a piece of equipment, other than, I assume yours will be at Coal City.
I'll have a piece of equipment there.
So, other than that, the other sites have a piece of equipment we need.
And we thank Greg tremendously for, for his efforts in this, it's not something that's required by us, he does it to, to help out the community and the county. So, yeah, they, they, I think Chad last year said he used tobacco to crunch down the trash to, to get more in it, so we appreciate all that help. Uh, for anybody that is wanting to volunteer and help out, I wanna make it clear to make sure you pack a cooler, there, there's no food or, or water at these sites, uh, so, make sure you.
There's no restaurant in Coal City, I don't know that there's a soda machine left in Coal City, maybe, but I don't think so.
So, so resources are pretty thin, so make sure you, you have something to drink and you bring a snack, because it becomes a long day if you don't. Let's see, what else did I have? Oh, we're gonna do the generator test here at the courthouse today from noon to one o'clock. This has been a long, long time coming. Uh, thanks to Joel and, and his group for, for getting that generator in here, and Breezy Electric for their hard work and many hours they've got invested in it. We did a, a, a test of the hookup, was it Monday, or, yeah. And so today, we've told everybody to save any work that they've got, uh, we're gonna literally shut down the system and, and fire this thing up, and, uh, hopefully everything goes to plan, so. Again, it's a long time coming.
We'll know when the generator comes on, what actually comes back on. Uh, we've tried to collect all the single-phase, uh, applications in this courthouse, uh, IT being one of them, security being second. And there may be some altercations to how we do this in the future. We'll see what the load does and how well it maintains it during work day, which will be a great test. So, we're looking forward to it, I wanna thank Breezy Electric, uh, for doing their job. Uh, ASCO came down, started to switch up, my understanding is they did pre-startup on the transfer switch. I'm here in a, not here now, but I will be in an official capacity shortly, doing the official startup on the generator set, for Kohler, and so hopefully everything goes good, and lights will come on when they go out. That's, that's the idea anyway.
Joel would appreciate your efforts on all that.
Well, again, I wanna thank Breezy Maintenance, Steve, he's done a lot of legwork, we had a tough time getting contractor to do this, folks. It seems like it's drug on, uh, Breezy Electric stepped in, I, I talked to them, they seemed to have a good. I talked to them, they seemed to have a good foothold on what was going on. So we're looking forward to this today. This is kind of exciting. The courthouse doesn't have to sit in the dark anymore. Yes, Mr. White, and I have not forgot about you.
You know how important this is to me?
I do.
People don't seem to realize that.
You're fat.
We're out of internet across the street.
Yeah.
If, you're dead to water here as far as power goes, and that's where the emergency operations center is, so this is...
Yeah, this is important, this is important for EMA, certainly. Like he said, he receives his internet from here and if there's nothing here, then he has nothing. And so this is a big step in the right direction.
Been a long time, Jim.
Many, many years. We started this back when Sam Hobbs was maintenance director.
Yeah, that's true. I've talked about that.
Twelve years ago.
I do have one other thing with Breezy Electric. We've talked with, Chris had come to us about lighting for his parking lot. We encumbered some remaining utility funds and had agreed to pay to get those lights and light poles up, if you all remember.
Yes.
I've got that estimate here from Breezy Electric for sixteen thousand dollars to do that work. They're the only one that bid on that project. I know it's something that Chris has wanted for a good while, maybe not as long as his generator, but I know he's wanted it for a good while. So I'd like to go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the Breezy Electric quote for sixteen thousand dollars to install six new pole bases, set four wire, set four poles with lights, locate and intercept existing conduit.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob, all in favor? Aye. Put that in the drawer basket, please. And I guess the last thing I want to say is we've got a ton of highway work going on this year, so I want our citizens to be patient with us. Greg and his crew are changing out some pipes, getting roads ready, going to do a lot of paving this year and a lot of repair. And that's a testament to the hard work from this board as well as the Highway Department. And I want to thank all those guys out there for what they've done, so...
I want to add to that if I can, Gary. For those not aware, two forty-six is going to have a closure. How long, I do not know. It's between Rensselaer Road and Smithville slash Patricksburg. Piers are going to be placed in three culverts. So two forty-six will be closed for heavens knows how long. And I don't know that Greg knew that or, because they start slapping signs up in there, they've x'd the concrete and appears to be right over sewer pipes, so just letting everybody know, five thirteen, I believe is what the sign said, so...
Have you been notified by NDOT?
I have not been notified by NDOT.
I have not either.
What we do have to do, gentlemen, there has to be an agreement of local detours. If we do not have any local detours, there is issue about any reversion running that order within the forty-six project. So I will make contact with NDOT today.
It's between, it'll be between Rensselaer...
But those, any possible local detours will have to be inspected and photographed prior to that road closure, and I usually know that three months ahead of time.
Well, they didn't know so...
So whatever we need to do...
We need to do it short order.
Yes, yes. And speaking of that, and I'll wrap up, we've still got the forty-three issue with the two bridges out here. Back on the tenth of April, Commissioners met over Clay County to do the awarding of the community crossings. I spoke with the governor, the governor's office. They've assured us that when those projects are done, Little Flock Road will be repaved in its entirety. Kevin Sears, over Transportation, has assured us of that as well as the governor's office. I've asked for that in an email and in writing, one or the other, and have yet to see that. And I requested that, but I just want the citizens to know, because that road is, was a community crossing road, two different sections, and it's been beat to death. So they've assured us that when those two projects are done, it will be repaved, so...
On the detour, Tinbury Detour, that would be an agreement, so that would need to be approved, but if it's starting on the fifteenth, I think before the next meeting.
I wanted to make a suggestion, if I can, that we allow Greg to run with this and conduct it the way it needs to be conducted as appropriately as possible. Unless we need a policy or an official...
What I'd suggest is a motion to allow one of the Commissioners to sign the agreement, pending review of Greg, if you want me to review it. And I think that would be the best thing. And then also what you could do is, at the next meeting, ratify it again so that everybody knows exactly what it is.
And it will lead to Commissioner's signature.
Yeah, I signed off on the official route on the other two for forty-three.
I'd make a motion to allow Superintendent Menzel to conduct the appropriate detouring to be signed by one of the three setting Commissioners upon approval. We can get the ball rolling on this prior to the next meeting.
Yeah, and we can leave it at that because whoever's available at the time...
Run in.
Yep.
So I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. Yeah, we don't want to get caught like we have before.
I thought maybe you knew, but that was a wrong assumption on my part.
Thank you. Anything else? I hear a motion in a general.
I make a motion in a general.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone. I got some more. You're signed, guys.
Does Greg go through these now to make sure he has everything in there?
Yeah, yeah, she'll need it in her office. Hey, Greg?
I don't care who they take stuff, as long as I get a copy back, that's all I ask.
I think Kelly's out there to make copies, I think.